Good evening colleagues and friends. As we approach, can you hear me? Yep. As we approach our commencements, I've been reflecting on what an extraordinary academic year this has been and how grateful I am to be part of this community. I've had the privilege of serving on this board for 40 years. I'm always inspired by how our colleges transform lives year after year after year. Every year, we serve more than 60,000 students, which adds up to over 2.5 million students that we've served over these last 40 years. I'm grateful to have had this opportunity. Since I'm fortunate to have attended every commencement, I hear these students' success stories. Our students graduate with honors, cum laude, magna cum laude, and summa cum laude. I am so impressed because when I graduated from Ohio State, I graduated, thank the Lordy. This year's end-of-the-year events were some of the most moving I have ever attended. Due to serious family illness, I couldn't attend every event this year, but those I did attend, I was deeply moved by the stories of our students and the stories that they shared. They spoke about the challenges they faced, their growth, and the support they received from our incredible professors and staff. They spoke of how their professors knew their names, how student programs helped them stay on track, and how they are now headed toward brighter futures, some transferring to their dream schools and others pursuing new career paths and with renewed confidence, all on their own upward trajectories because of the nurturings you have given them. When I listen to our students or when I engage with students like our Mars Rover team, I see brilliance, hard work, grit, and a deep sense of community. I see students who have found not only their passion, but their purpose, their tribe, and they have found where they belong. They begin to answer Mary Oliver's call to action in her poem "The Summer." What is your plan to do with your one wild and precious life? None of this happens without the incredible work of you, our professors, classified professionals, and administrators. Thank you for the care and dedication you give to every student. You don't just teach, you inspire, you support, and you help these students realize their potential. Our most important role as trustees, our most important role in trustees is to hire the best and the brightest in every instance and ensure they have the tools they need and then stay out of their way, and I'm really good at that. I have also witnessed firsthand the incredible power of scholarships. Many of us have worked tirelessly to raise funds for over 40 years or more in these organizations that we're in to raise funds for scholarships for our students. The support makes the difference between students staying in school and walking away. Every dollar we raise opens doors to opportunities. This year, thanks to our dedicated donors, deserving students got close to 1,500 scholarships, which comes to over $1.2 million. Also, there is another million dollars in emergency funds such as housing, food, clothing, and educational needs that our students needed to help them succeed and to finish. As a first-generation Ohio State student, no doubt I would have done it better academically if I had these resources. So as we prepare to celebrate our graduates, I want to thank you for the impact you have made this year and for the difference you continue to make in the lives of millions of students. You add an incredible value to our students and by doing so, also to our local communities, of course. And here's to a bold future and to our communities that makes this all possible. Thank you.
Please join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments? No. It is my honor and absolute pleasure to recognize an extraordinary group of student athletes who have not only brought pride to Irvine Valley College but to our entire district. Could I ask the coach and members of the tennis team to please go to the speaker's Thank you. We have more. The IVC men's tennis team has once again proven what dedication, resilience, and teamwork can accomplish by winning the California Community College Athletic Association state championship. This championship win reflects the true spirit of excellence that we strive to foster across the South Orange County Community College District in academics, in character, and in competition. To the players, you balanced rigorous training and travel with your studies, you competed with integrity, and you represented IVC with class and sportsmanship. You have inspired us all. To the coaches and faculty, thank you for supporting our students in striving for the best. Your guidance and membership helped them compete at the highest level. And so, on behalf of the SOCCCD Board of Trustees, it is my great pleasure to honor, to present this certificate of recognition to the men's tennis team. But before we do that, the coach, would you like to introduce your members and say a few words?
I would love to. First of all, thank you for having us here tonight. We are super appreciative. Many tennis programs across the country have been canceled. We are tremendously lucky to have the support of our athletic director, staff, with trainers. And I was blessed to have an incredible group of players. And just one of the most amazing things about our season was not necessarily just on the court, but before the championship match, previous members of our team that spanned over 10 years all got together, made probably one of the most inspiring team videos I've ever seen, all giving like support, wishing the team luck from all over the country. And I think that when our team saw that video in the hotel before the championship match, I just felt like good things were going to happen. So thank you for all your hard work. Here's our team captain, Luis Moros, great team leader, finalist of the state championship in singles, and kept the team together through thick and thin. You know, we had some tough times losing, but a very solid player. Next up, we have, next up, we have Sam. Sam was a solid performer for us all year, ready to step in, and we're excited for what he's going to bring to us next year. Very happy to have him returning. Thank you, Sam. Next up, we have Jonathan. Jonathan was one of the most improved players. He was willing to follow direction. I made him do this one drill till he was blue in the face, and he kept on asking for more, and it was beautiful to see it pay off. So thank you for working so hard and trusting me. Next up, we have Souf, also Soufion. Soufion has just, it's synonymous to think of Souf and not think of his incredible backhand, but more importantly, he was with us last year, brought that team spirit and energy that I think separates our team, and had an incredible end of year, reaching the semifinals in singles in the individual competition. Great job, Souf. Next up, we have Bradley. Bradley's an incredibly good doubles player, great hands at the net, but was also a team player, was willing to do anything to help the team. And once again, I'm super excited for what he's going to bring to the team next year. Happy to have him back. Last but not least, we have Kay. Kay brings beautiful Japanese discipline, joy to the team. It's kind of amazing how through silence, he can be so loud. The team would look at him during matches, and just his presence would motivate us. So thank you for being who you are.
Thank you. Could we have you come up here, please, for a picture? Kay, it's my pleasure to introduce our new student trustee, Blake Leonard. Blake is a Marine Corps veteran, and he left the Marine Corps in February, came to Irvine Valley, and immediately got on the cabinet of the Vets Club. He's a political science and international relations major, and he is our student trustee. So he does not waste time, does he? If you would come over here, we have an oath. I say your name.
I, Blake Leonard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservations and purpose of evasions.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I'm going to need a repeat on that.
Okay. I'm sorry. That I will well and faithfully discharge.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Okay. It is now time for board reports. So let's just start here and go down. So trustee Jamal?
Thank you. Student trustee Leonard, welcome. I know you're going to do fantastic. You're following the footsteps. I think she's here.
Yeah.
Your predecessor who did an exceptional job. Student trustee Clemente, right back at you, and I know you're going to do exceptionally well. Thank you. Let me just cover, I guess, a couple things. The one, the Saddleback College Quad christening coronation, whatever you want to call that. It was fabulous. I know when I joined the board in 2012, one of the things that I wanted to see happen was to reimagine the quad, and it was fantastic to see. Thank you, Dr. Stern, for you and the team at Honey, where are you, for pushing it forward. And to Scott Brown for capturing an incredible photo as Elliot Stern devised a, some kind of a contraption that allows you to break the champagne bottle on the concrete but not allow the glass to splatter around.
Wow.
So well done. And you and I together on the phone, he did exceptional job. The foundation, both foundation scholarship ceremonies were wonderful. The fact that we raised over $1.1 million for student scholarships is spectacular, and kudos to both colleges, the donors in particular, but also the foundation staff, the staffs of both Saddleback College Foundation and Irvine Valley College did a magnificent job, and to see those scholarships go out in both moving ceremonies was incredible. And congratulations to the graduates and the upcoming commencements at the end of this week. Thank you.
So for my board report, I was happy to attend the IVC employee recognition. It's always great going to these and just seeing what great faculty and staff we have at both of our colleges. I was also fortunate enough to attend the nurses pinning. It's something that I love to attend. Every opportunity I get to just see the great students that come out of the nursing program at Saddleback College. I was also present for the IVC Student Services and Student Union Groundbreaking, which was another great event, early morning, a little misty, but it was a great place to be, and I'm really excited for IVC, you know, sort of entry to kind of be redone and redeveloped. And then I was also proud to be present for the swearing in of Irvine's newest city council member, Betty Martinez Franco. She's the first Latina to serve on Irvine City Council. I also represent a portion of Irvine in my district, so the Irvine Hispanic Caucus has grown by one more member, so now it's two of us. And that's it for my board report.
Thank you. Trustee Bart?
Thank you, Madam President. So since our last meeting, I've had the pleasure of attending the employee recognition ceremony as well, and it was very impressive to see the longevity with so many dedicated employees. Then on Thursday, I really look forward to the Saddleback College commencement ceremony. Next weekend is Memorial Weekend, and we will all enjoy the extra time off with the extended weekend. But let's also remember the meaning of Memorial Day. Memorial Day, originally known as Decoration Day, is one of the federal holidays in the United States for honoring and mourning the U.S. military personnel who died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. It is observed every year on the last Monday of May. It is fitting to pay tribute to those brave men and women who are no longer with us but served with dignity and courage to protect our country and our freedom. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Miltiger?
Thank you. And as I mentioned in my invocation, this year's end-of-the-year events were really like the best I've ever attended in 40 years. So they were great. And I'll mention some things I attended. I attended the IVC Student Service Student Union Groundbreaking. It was the largest capital development in the college's 40-year history, and I was there at the beginnings, which makes me feel like IVC's mother. Professor Hernandez called this a future hub for connection, collaboration, and student life, and the front door over the rest of the campus. At the IVC Puente Program, student success was abundant, and Lisa Alvarez was their top cheerleader. At the Saddleback College Fashion Show called Luminescence, the culinary arts students created extraordinarily delicious and creative treats, and incredible students created fashions, and it's highly recommended, and I'll be there next year. It was really a fun event. At the IVC Student Recognition Celebration for Students in EOPS and CARE, Next Up Up, CalWorks, Guardian Scholars, with a 3.0 GPA or higher, I heard so many inspirational stories and got to see Charlotte again, our student trustee. At the Year Launch Party, which is also, I went, which is also at the IVC Arts Complex, which I love being at because of their artsy environment, students and professors read heartfelt poems, including a poem by Lisa Alvarez recalling Professor Roy Bauer, who died last year. At the Saddleback College Undergraduate Research Conference, I watched a movie created by our media students. I saw the keynote speakers and the award ceremony. And I never miss the two scholarship ceremonies at both colleges. Donors are always seated at the same tables as their scholarship recipients. We meet the scholarship recipients for the first time. And I've been raising funds at many different organizations for both colleges, and it's always inspirational to get to know the students and meet them for the first time and get to really understand what they're going to do in their future life. And then we also celebrate them at our own meetings in the community. The Saddleback Theater Arts Program of Fantastic was fantastic, and it was in the intimate student theater was fantastic.
Thank you.
The Fantastic was off-Broadway for 42 years, the longest-running musical in the off-Broadway now, and ours was superior to all of them. Thank you.
Okay. I will go next. It was a busy three weeks. It's only been three weeks since we've seen you, and a lot has happened. I'll mention some of the things that the others haven't mentioned necessarily. For one thing, I went to San Diego to accompany our teams in terms of an accreditation training. And in public speaking, which I taught, we talk a lot about storytelling, but it was really interesting to me to see how they use storytelling with data, and I feel like I know a lot more about accreditation. We also had Lori Davis come and visit us, and she is a state senator. She really was open and receptive and just really listened well, and it was a pleasure to talk with her. I went to the student transfer celebration, and so I sat with the Bruins because that's where I went. So we had a really good time talking about their future, and it was really fun. One of the things that I went to that I think is really important was the Night of Champions from the Saddleback College Forensics. And I think it's really important that our academic teams also receive a lot of credit and notoriety and thanks for the work that they do. It's just, you know, it reminded me of when I was in that activity, and they just did a great job, and it was very, very nice to see them. I want to, there are many other things, but I want to thank our ASG people this evening, Christian Sazo and Clarice Encarnacion. They've done a wonderful job, and this is their last meeting. So for my last seven seconds, would you please clap for them? Thank you very much. We've enjoyed working with you a great deal, and you've done a wonderful job. Okay, could we have our new student trustee?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I greatly appreciate everyone, especially Mr. Collin, who is a veterans counselor at And all of the members of the board. Getting out of the Marine Corps has been one of the toughest, biggest changes in my life, and both student bodies have made it very easy, and I look forward to positively impacting both. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we now, since I've already thanked them and introduced them in a way, but let's have our student reports from our student ASB presidents.
Good evening, members of the board. First off, I'd like to recognize the newly sworn student trustee, Blake Leonard. I congratulate you on your win in our March election. I know that you will represent Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College very well. However, you do have some big shoes to fill from our former trustee, Charlotte Clemente. Saddleback ASG for the month of May has been cheering on our fellow students as we are all engaged in finals. We handed out some goodie bags on the quad. I myself finished my last final this morning. I was proud to attend the opening of the quad here at Saddleback College. It is a very well-done piece of area with, while construction took all year and messed up all of our events, I'm glad that the project is finished. I was proud to also attend Saddleback College, the foundation reception, and fortunate to give a short speech there. I'm grateful to Dr. McCann for giving me the opportunity to speak, as well as thankful to the foundation for the scholarship I received. Finally, ASG also had our annual banquet last Friday where we celebrated our new incoming leaders. Tonight is my last Board of Trustees report here while representing Saddleback College ASG for a year and a half here at the South Orange County Community College District. Not many leaders in ASG get to attend these meetings as long as I have. While my journey will continue at UCLA in the upcoming fall quarter, thank you. I will never forget the people here who have made my transfer a success. I have met the most amazing and supportive people here at Saddleback College. I'd like to thank President Stern, who I met with every month and who has been a great mentor to me throughout my time in ASG, to trustee Tim Jamal. I'm grateful that we got to connect this academic year. I'm grateful to have you as my district trustee. I'm grateful to my friend and fellow president, Clarice Encarnacion, who I was happy to represent here at these board meetings this year. To everyone in this room, I will never forget the unwavering kindness and support you've shown me. I'm truly blessed. Thank you so much. That is the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. I will miss you. Well, actually, actually, never mind. Hold on. We are wrapping up the year. It's a nice evening to be here with you all one last time. Before I give thanks, I will update you guys on this past month's efforts for ASIVC. Last week, we provided our students with three events for de-stress before finals. We had tapioca in tote bags where students could drink foba and paint on tote bags on Monday, board game night on Tuesday, and soak the stress, which is a water balloon fight on Wednesday. And additionally, we are wrapping up the year with one last push for bylaw amendments, which provides a more defined purpose for our judicial court and a new committee code to hopefully increase committee productivity. We also voted on a statement, ASIVC as a whole, asking faculty using Brisk AI as a part of the pilot group to disclose Brisk AI's use for the class and the course syllabus and overall be very transparent with its use in the course to students. And as I look back on this year as ASIVC president, I would love to give some thanks. Thank you to my advisor, Arminé Derigichian. She came in in October, and, you know, we really ended the year strong. It's not easy to step in halfway. And thank you to Erin Pollard for filling in for Dr. Amric Jo Hall when he left in the beginning. She had some very big shoes to fill, and I think she did it, you know, better than anyone else could for, you know, the absence that we had. So thank you to Erin Pollard. Thank you to Zaraida Quiros for being, you know, my absolute rock. It has been a pleasure working with her for the past two years, and she has been my biggest supporter and guider, and a lot of other students see her as that as well. So I thank her for her love and time. Thank you, Christian Spazo, for being alongside me through everything. It was a pleasure meeting you last year when we went on the DC trip together, and it was really full circle when we went again this year. And you're just always so positive, and you always lead with so much passion, and I really admire you for that. Thank you, Dr. Hernandez, for being such a model leader. It's inspiring to see the way that you have served as such a centripetal force for IVC with equity always at the forefront of your practices. So I thank you for being such a great role model, Dr. Hernandez, as well as Dr. Martha McDonald, the VP of Student Services at IVC. I look back on every meeting that we've had together, and every time I left your office, I just grew like even more. So I really appreciate for the time that you took to really nurture me as a leader and especially as a Latina. I really appreciate you for that. Thank you, trustees, and thank you Chancellor Barnes again for being just such a role model. Seeing you lead both colleges as, again, a Latina is just inspiring in the leadership here at the district has just, you know, eradicated every barrier that I could have imagined that I would have faced in climbing those positions in my dreams. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Can I share where I'm transferring to?
Yes.
I will be transferring to UCLA with Christian. I'll be studying biochemistry, and this summer, I will be doing research on cancer cells and chemotherapy. So yes.
President's prerogative. I let her go over on the last one.
It's our last meeting.
You only stopped me. That wasn't very nice.
Okay, now we have the, just a second. Rebecca Beck, the Irvine Valley College Academic Senate.
No report.
No report. Okay. How about the Saddleback College Academic Senate?
Yes, hello. Thank you, President Inman and trustees. Sort of in step with the theme today, I wanted to sort of focus on faculty who have served us at Saddleback for a very long time and are retiring. So we have several, and then I'm going to highlight one of them in particular. But we have Ann Lawson from nursing, Bill Billingsley from history, Diane McGroarty from fashion, Elizabeth Innins from biology, Jenny Langrell, librarian, Carrie Crabbe from kinesiology, and football coach, Loretta Nicola from nursing, Mark Blethyn from kinesiology, cross-country and track coach, which many of you know well, Miriam Azari, counseling. Scott Frederickson in business and Martin Welk in real estate. Thank you for letting me list all of them. But I wanted to highlight, I guess, what I would call one of my own from the School of STEM, Elizabeth Innins. So Elizabeth started out at Saddleback in 1990, the year I started high school, as a part-time instructor and then was the microbiology lab technician before becoming a full-time instructor in 1999. She's, she worked at Saddleback for 35 years. My mic's acting up, sorry. I'm too close. How about now? Her main focus was human anatomy and microbiology, which as you all know are major prerequisites for our esteemed nursing program. Other accomplishments, she served as department chair, was professor of the year. She's developed much of the microbiology curriculum and materials used and still use today. Her Department of Biological Sciences wanted to extend the deepest gratitudes for her extraordinary years of service, specifically especially notable as her supportive and upbeat disposition and students consistently reporting how much they love her class. So thank you, Elizabeth, for all your years of service.
Thank you. Faculty Association, Robert Melendez.
Yes, let me start by welcoming student trustee Leonard. Good to have you and as the president of the Faculty Association, if there's ever anything I can do or help you with or have a discussion with you on, please, I invite you to reach out. Tonight, I want to focus my comments to highlight the careers and advocacy of two retiring faculty, Mark Blethyn and Jenny Langrell. Mark Blethyn will retire with over 24 years of service to our student athletes in the School of Health and Wellness. As the head coach of the men's and women's track and field programs at Saddleback College, he leaves behind a legacy of excellence and accomplishment. In many different ways, he will be hard to truly replace and honestly probably never will be for lots of different reasons. Another faculty member retiring is Jenny, Jenny Langrell. Jenny leaves us after close to 20 years as a librarian at Saddleback College. In addition to serving the students who came into the library, Jenny was part of the library's expansion of their inner library loan, improving the library's physical collection and modernizing the Saddleback Library overall. Her work helped drive up use, effectiveness and availability of resources to Saddleback students. On behalf of the faculty of our district, I want to extend heartfelt thanks to both Mark and Jenny. Your work as leaders within the Faculty Association was often behind the scenes, always demanding and frequently thankless, yet it was absolutely vital to the well-being and strength of our union. It is a role that many understandably shy away from, but one that carries tremendous responsibility and impact. Your advocacy and steadfast reputation has ensured that our rights, voices and interests were protected as faculty. Thank you, Mark and Jenny, for doing the work that sustains the strength of our community.
Thank you very much. Irvine Valley Classified Senate, Ace.
Good evening, everyone. I want to use my time tonight to recognize Larissa Corapanova, IVC's Classified Employee of the Year. So there's a resolution on tonight's docket honoring her incredible work at IVC and it is very well deserved. Larissa is one of the kindest and most compassionate people many of us at IVC have had the privilege to work with. She supports students in our Adult English as a Second Language Program through the English Language Center, yet her scope and impact go far beyond that. She helps students navigate personal and financial challenges and connects them to the right campus departments and services so they can get the support they need. She's often the very first person to make students feel like they truly belong at IVC. One student shared, "Sometimes I get depressed with my personal life. Larissa always comforts me and encourages me." Another student accidentally bought the wrong textbook and couldn't return it due to a language barrier. Larissa stepped in and worked with the bookstore to secure a refund. The student couldn't express her gratitude in English, but her translator made it clear how much it meant. Larissa is a connector, not just linking students to departments, but offering warm handoffs, embodying the true essence of caring campus. She's a steady presence across our campus at basic needs, Calworks, Mesa, outreach and more. She's fluent in Russian, conversational in Spanish and has even picked up phrases in Chinese and Farsi to great students in their own languages. The kind of thoughtfulness that she brings to everyone, sorry, that's the kind of thoughtfulness she brings to everything that she does. We're incredibly lucky to have Larissa as part of the IVC family and we're very proud we get to celebrate and formally recognize her tonight. And I'd like to close my report by wishing all our classified professionals a happy Classified Schools Employees Week at IVC and across the district. We appreciate you and all the work that you do for our students and our community. As Chancellor Barnes reminded us during Classified Day in March, we are the largest employee group in the district and the care and commitment we show to our students and to one another truly makes a difference. And to all our students, best of luck on all your finals. You got this. And to our class of 2025, congratulations.
Thank you. Saddleback College Classified Senate, Earlene Balo.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to recognize our Saddleback College Employee of the Year, Willie Baldwin. Willie is a beloved member of the School of Amped. He has been a lab tech for the Graphic Design and Graphic Communications Department for over 20 years and just very recently took on a full-time role. From his colleagues, his dedication is obvious. His energy and uplifting spirit is port in the storm when things go haywire. Where there's a will, there's a way. So that was super sweet and I wanted to share it. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the extraordinary efforts of all of our classified professionals as we continue to navigate the transition to banner. Change, Chris, on this scale is never easy, but I'm just joking. It's not easy, but I've never been prouder to see how much my colleagues approach it with patience, care and a deep commitment to supporting students. You know that we are really good at that. The teamwork, humor and behind-the-scenes support that we have given to each other has also made this tough process feel a little bit lighter. So we're going to keep on being great just because that's who we are as a district. This past month, Saddleback Classified Senate had the honor of awarding a scholarship, first time in four years, to a deserving student whose dedication and perseverance truly reflect our college's values. We're hoping to keep carrying that on. Meeting our students at the scholarship ceremony and hearing their stories reminded us why our work matters, both in the work that we do and the work that we, that we do at our work, but then we voluntary do on the side. And in the spirit of ongoing support, our team has organized flower sales for this coming commencement and all proceeds for next year's, for the, the sales will go to next year's student scholarship. So thank you very much.
Thank you. California School Employees Association, Desiree Ortiz.
Thank you so much. As my colleague stated, this week, we are celebrating our Classified School Employees Week throughout the state, although we will not be celebrating per se this week, we're going to wait till the summer. Thank you all for your support. For those of you who did ask what, I had a few ask what is CSCA? CSCA is the larger, the largest California School Employees Association of Classified Employees Union throughout the United States. I am honored that I get to serve to be the union president of our chapter, SOC CD 586, with a little bit over 450 classified employees throughout the district. I'm honored that I get to serve with an amazing E-Board who has come with the lens of creating a caring community. For all of you, you know, I pride myself in working in an area of care. So I'm honored alongside of my colleagues here to just celebrate our amazing classified professionals throughout our district and also to our amazing students that we get to serve every day. Congratulations, Go Class of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the Police Officers Association? And I don't believe there are any board requests for reports. Okay, there's no public hearings and so we will now turn to Vice President Trustee Ryan Dak for the resolutions.
All right, we have a number of resolutions here that I will be reading in lieu of our clerk being absent today. So we're going to start with item 6.1, Resolution in Recognition of Larissa Corapanova, the 2025 Irvine Valley College Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year. Whereas Larissa Corapanova has served Irvine Valley College with unwavering dedication, exemplifying the mission and values of the institution through her compassionate, student-centered approach. Therefore, be it resolved that the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate and the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees recognize Larissa Corapanova as the 2025 Irvine Valley College Classified Employee of the Year and express their heartfelt appreciation for her extraordinary contributions to the college, its students and the broader community. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. A motion by, oh, actually, I think that's your job, right? No? Okay, I'll take it over. Okay. Motion by trustee Jamal and a second by, I believe it was trustee Bartlett. Okay, so we'll vote on the resolution.
On a five to zero vote with student trustee voting yes, the motion carries.
All right, on to item 6.2, Resolution in Recognition of Brooke Bowie, the 2025 Irvine Valley College Outstanding Manager of the Year. Whereas Dr. Brooke Bowie served as Dean of Liberal Arts at Irvine Valley College and holds a BA from Macalester College, an MA from the University of Minnesota and a PhD from the University of Southern California, bringing to her role an exceptional blend of academic achievement, leadership experience and a deep commitment to student success. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Dr. Brooke Bowie as the Irvine Valley College Outstanding Manager of the Year for 2025. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Jamal and a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Bartlett. The vote, the board will now vote on the resolution.
On a five to zero vote with trustee as an advisory vote, the motion carries.
Onto item one, excuse me, item 6.3, A Resolution in Recognition of Will Baldwin, the 2025 Saddleback College Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year. Whereas William Baldwin has served Saddleback College with distinction for more than two decades, first as a part-time employee and now is a full-time senior lab technician, supporting the graphic design, graphic communications, architecture, fashion and interior design departments with exceptional knowledge, commitment and care. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate William Baldwin as the Saddleback College Classified Employee of the Year for 2025 with deep gratitude for his years of service, innovation and impact. I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by trustee Bartlett. Call for a second.
I want to be collaborative. I'll second it then.
Okay, and seconded by trustee Jamal. The board will now vote on the resolution.
On a five to zero vote with student trustee advisory yes, the motion carries five to zero.
Onto item 6.4, A Resolution in Recognition of Christina Hinkel, the 2025 Saddleback College Outstanding Manager of the Year. Is Christina here?
Yeah.
Christina, would you like to stand up while I? No? No? Okay. You should. All right, everybody look at her while I read this. Whereas Christina Hinkel serves as the Executive Dean of Humanities and Social Sciences at Saddleback College, leading one of the largest and most diverse academic divisions with clarity, compassion and visionary purpose. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Christina Hinkel as the Saddleback College Manager of the Year for 2025 in recognition of her leadership, tireless dedication and enduring contributions to the college and its mission. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Milchiker and seconded by trustee Jamal. The board will now vote on the resolution.
On a five to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion carries.
Congratulations, Christina. Item 6.5, A Resolution in Recognition of Angie Gutierrez. Is Angie Gutierrez here? No? Okay. 2025 District Services Classified Employee of the Year. Whereas Angie Gutierrez has demonstrated exceptional dedication, professionalism and initiative in her role as district services, or excuse me, at district services, providing steadfast support that enhances day-to-day operations across the South Orange County Community College District. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby recognize and commend Angie Gutierrez as District Services Classified Employee of the Year in honor of her exemplary work ethic, her invaluable support to the district, district's operations and her lasting impact on the people and programs of the South Orange County Community College District. I will entertain a motion. Moved by trustee Bartlett and a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Jamal. The board will now vote on the resolution.
On a five to zero vote with an advisory vote of yes by the student trustee, the motion passes.
Item 6.6, A Resolution in Recognition of Josephine Bullen. Is Josephine Bullen here tonight? No? 2025 District Services Classified Employee of the Year. Whereas Josephine Bullen has contributed more than 16 years of outstanding service to the South Orange County Community College District, earning widespread admiration for her developmental expertise, commitment to student success and collaborative spirit. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Josephine Bullen as the District Services Classified Employee of the Year for 2025 in recognition of her innovation, dedication and lasting impact on the district and its students. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Jamal and a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Bartlett. The board will now vote on the resolution.
On a five to zero vote with student advisory vote of yes, the motion passes.
Onto item 6.7, A Resolution in Recognition of Sandy Pope. Is Sandy Pope present today? The 2025 District Services Manager of the Year. Whereas Sandy Pope has served the South Orange County Community College District with remarkable dedication, professionalism and heart, contributing to some of the district's most critical initiatives with poise and persistence. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Sandy Pope as District Services Manager of the Year for 2025 in recognition of her outstanding leadership, dedication and contributions to the advancement and well-being of the entire district. I will call for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Jamal and a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Bartlett. The vote, the board will now vote on the resolution.
On a five to zero vote with the student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion passes.
Item 6.8, A Resolution in Recognition of Kawhi Taneo, 2025 District Services Manager of the Year. Whereas Kawhi Taneo has demonstrated exceptional dedication, professionalism and leadership in her role at the South Orange County Community College District, consistently going above and beyond her official duties to ensure the success of key institutional initiatives. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby recognize and commend Kawhi Taneo for being District Services Manager of the Year in honor of her extraordinary service, collaborative leadership and vital role in advancing the district's mission. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Bartlett and a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Jamal. The board will now vote on the resolution.
On a five to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion passes.
Item 6.9, A Resolution to Recognize and Pay Tribute to the Contributions of Generations of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders Who Have Enriched the History of the United States During the Month of May. Whereas May is identified as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, when the nation celebrates the diversity of cultures, breadth of achievement and remarkable contributions of AAPI communities, of brave immigrants who motivated by the promise of possibility, picked up their lives and found new homes in America, of native peoples who have stewarded lands since time immemorial and of community leaders shaping a brighter future for us all. Therefore, be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District's Board of Trustees proclaims May 2025 as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and asks all students and employees to learn more about the history of the AAPI community through appropriate programs and activities. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Jamal and a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Bartlett. The board will now vote on a resolution.
On a five to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion passes.
Last one. Item six ten, a resolution to raise awareness about the importance of mental health and its impacts on the well-being of all employees and students throughout the district. The resolution helps to reaffirm solidarity with those who are experiencing mental health conditions while renewing South Orange County Community College District's commitment to providing faculty, staff, and students with the support they need and deserve. Whereas, approximately one in five adults, that is 22.8%, and six in one youths aged 16 to 17, 16.5% in the United States experience mental illness or a mental health disorder in a given year, according to the National Institute of Mental Health. Therefore, be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District continues its commitment to partner with our community members to ensure that all mental health services are available, valuable, and culturally appropriate for all South Orange County Community College District stakeholders. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Jamal.
Second.
And seconded by trustee Bartlett. The board will now vote on the resolution.
On a five to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, this motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now to seven point one, Board Policy Revision for Approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It has been moved by trustee Jamal.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we will now vote on this, please. On a five to zero vote with student advisory vote of yes, the motion passes. Okay. All right, on a five to zero vote with student trustee abstaining, the vote, motion passes. Okay, seven point two is Board Policy Revision for Approval. No, I'm sorry, Revision for Review and Study, seven point two.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Bartlett. That the Board Policy Revision for Review and Study be accepted. On a five to zero vote with student advisory vote of abstention, the motion passes. Seven point three, Board Member Compensation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It has been moved by trustee Dack.
Second.
And seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion?
I'm happy just to speak to this. So our Board Policy in California Education Code permits our governing board on an annual basis to increase its compensation by 5%. And so they're moving from a whopping $750 per month to, what's the number? To $787.50 per month. So that, this is what's on the table tonight for approval. And then the student member's monthly compensation is 375, and it would move to 393.75.
And I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up because I know that every time this is coming, when I've been on the board, whatever the amount, it's still taxpayer money, and we want to be transparent about it.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. On a five to zero vote with student trustee abstention, the Board Member Compensation motion passes. Seven point four, the annual approval for student trustee to receive compensation and to make in second motions for board meetings. Is there a motion?
I'm not sure now.
I'll second.
It has been moved by trustee Milchiker and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion?
I was kidding.
I know.
We knew. Okay, let's vote, please. On a five to zero vote with student trustee voting yes in an advisory capacity, the motion for student trustee to receive compensation has passed. Okay, number eight is presentations, of which we do not have any this evening. Number nine is the consent calendar. Are there any polls from the consent calendar? Trustee Bartlett.
Thank you, I'd like to poll items nine point six, nine point seven, and nine point eight.
Six, seven, eight. Are there any other polls? Okay, let's vote on all of the items except for nine point six, seven, and eight.
Did you get a motion in the second?
Oh. No.
I moved.
So moved.
Oh, second, second.
It has been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Jamal to move the, to vote on the consent calendar.
The balance.
The balance. On a five to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the consent calendar has been approved except for the pulled items. Okay, let's go to nine point six, trustee Bartlett.
Thank you, Madam President. So there is an item, supplier is CDW Government LLC. It's for district-wide backup and recovery software. The, there was a board approval, I believe, in six twenty-eight of twenty-one. The amount is $705,000. Is that an annual amount or is that a cumulative amount going back to 2021?
I believe that's the, I believe that's an annual amount, but I'd have to double-check. So as we move more of our infrastructure to the cloud, then our computing cost, as you start to process in the cloud, and we don't do what's called restricted metering at the moment, the cost would increase. But I'll double-check and get back to you. But I believe that's the cost for this year. That's not the total cost.
Okay, darn. I was hoping it was cumulative, but, all right, thank you. And then...
Wait, so do we do one at a time?
Yeah, you do one at a time.
Yeah.
Oh, each item, okay, I have several on.
Okay, right. Are there, is there any other discussion on nine point six?
Well, I have other items.
We'll do them one at a time for the vote.
But nine point six, you still have nine point six items.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
Do you want me to cover all my nine point six items?
Yes, sorry.
So then the next item is, let's see, the supplier is Gallegos United. And this is for a work order for marketing services. It's for the Hispanic and Latinx Student Enrollment Campaign for $228,376. Again, I didn't know if this was a one-time item or if this is cumulative. The, the board approved, I guess, the original item in 2023.
I'm trying to find it, is that a Saddleback item? I believe it is.
Saddleback College, yes.
Yes, that's an, that's an annual cost. So we've been using a specific marketer that is Latino-specific marketing probably for three or four years. And as a result, our, the Latino percentage of our population has gone up about 1% per year by lowering barriers that have stopped a lot of Latino students from coming to Saddleback. So we're very happy with them. We do track, whenever we hire a marketer for a specific purpose, we use alias URLs in everything that they produce for us. So we're able to actually see whether they're productive and how that compares to other marketers in our own internal marketing. And they've been extremely effective.
Okay, good, it's, it's, I'm glad that you've got metrics in place and that they're performing well. Thank you. Let's see if I have any others. I think... I think that was it for nine point six. So with that, I'll, I'll move those two items, yes.
Oh, I stand corrected, it's a three-year contract, the item that you asked. You referred to the backup.
Oh, so it's 705,000 for three years?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's good. Okay, thank you for that clarification. I will move these two items now.
Is there a second?
So what, are we voting on nine point six?
Nine point six.
Yeah, second.
Okay, it has been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Jamal for the purchase orders, checks, and dispersments. Please vote. On a five to zero vote with student advisory vote of yes, the motion passes. Okay, nine point seven, trustee Bartlett.
Thank you, Madam President. So item number one on this item is Community College League of California, renewal of some anti-plagiarism software. The amount is $84,000, $84,278. And I was wondering, I'm assuming that this software catches, if you're preparing a school paper or a report, it catches items that are plagiarized. I'm just wondering, and I think that's great, we, we need to do that. But I'm just wondering, with the renewal under this contract amount, because the contract started in, let's see, I guess it's starting in, in 2025, so in August. Is there an AI component to this software so that it kind of learns from itself relative to the anti-plagiarism?
I, I wouldn't claim that Turnitin is using modern AI software. What it's doing is it's taking words and phrases, comparing it to known databases and items that are already on the internet. It provides a report to the faculty member where if it believes that there's plagiarism, it provides a report that has a link to the original source, and then the faculty member themselves determine if there's plagiarism. So I wouldn't say it's AI determining if there's plagiarism.
Okay, so it goes back to the original author. Okay, because I know in things like, where you can redo phraseology on things like ChatGPT and so on, that it wouldn't necessarily go back to original author because it's coming out of a program like ChatGPT. Would this software catch something like that? Because an AI component, would, it learns from itself and it would look for something like that that's coming from a third party that it isn't necessarily a named person that's authored.
I, I have an update. I used AI to ask that question, and it says, yes, Turnitin uses AI for a variety of purposes, including AI writing detection.
Good, okay, great.
Yeah, I had one thing.
It's fast.
It's not very good at the latter. So it's very good at identifying specific passages that are scraped from the internet. It uses complex algorithms in AI to try to detect AI, but it hasn't had a hundred percent success rate, and there are a number of false positives. Several faculty members have put their own writing through Turnitin, and it has come back with a high probability of those writings coming from AI, when in fact, they were not.
Okay, so this is a one-year contract. I would highly recommend that we get it out to bid and look for some other vendors that might be more appropriate in the AI age.
And that is the reason it is a one-year contract.
Perfect, thank you, okay. And then my other item is item number eight. It's to provide international student recruitment services in China and Taiwan for $30,000. And I just wanted to find out how the program works and if we have metrics relative to the student enrollment increases.
Great question. So these are open contracts for agencies with whom we partner to identify students who would be good students at the college. And they work on a commission basis. So we typically pay, I believe it's about 15% of the first two semesters fees as a fee to the agency that brings us a student that successfully enrolls and completes those first two terms. So the metric is built into the payment system.
Great, okay, thank you. Just the information we get is, I won't say it's sparse, but you can't put everything in there that we need to know. But the staff report has, you know, the basic information. That's why I have a lot of questions, so. And I'm not familiar with all the different programs and companies we work with yet, so just bear with me here, all right. With that, my questions are answered, and I would move this item.
Okay.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Dack. Please vote. For nine point seven.
So, Madam President, can I just say? One, one thing that, it's not always possible. One thing I know that is available is to ask the chancellor and the staff questions that you have. Obviously, we want to be transparent about it here as well. So I think some, sometimes it's been useful. I know that I've used it over the years to inquire about things that I wasn't aware of in certain agenda. But doesn't mean it's not a substitute for doing it publicly either.
And I would actually prefer to do it prior to the meetings, but we get our agendas on Thursday. I'm working all day Thursday, all day Friday. I don't want to pester any of the staff over the weekend. Monday, I'm working, and then I come to the meeting here. So, I mean, one thing that we might want to think about for the future, and I did this in 2016 when I was on the Board of Supervisors. We used to get our board agendas that had 200 items or more on a Thursday morning, and our meetings were on Tuesday. So we, we had to work through the weekend, getting questions answered, and meeting with vendors, and then getting prepared for that Tuesday morning meeting. So one thing I did was I changed all of the board agendas. They have to be printed, posted, distributed, everything, two weeks in advance prior to the board meeting. And staff had a heart attack the first couple of meetings. We had a lot of supplementals, but that pared down over time. And now, everybody loves it. And it's, it's about openness and transparency in government, and everybody loves it because you've got that meet, that board meeting agenda posted two weeks ahead of time. Public can get information, staff can answer questions, and the board members have the opportunity to have those two weeks to really go through things and get things vetted, so.
No, I, I totally understand that. I know that, well, I, I have, I work as well, run two or three different organizations. And so the staff knows, the chancellor knows. I am not bashful about sending messages on the weekends. I apologize for that. But I understand that your sensitivity to that. But I think there's, I think there's a role for both, right? I mean, to inquire in advance, but also to have transparency during the board meeting so the public is aware of what we're, we're talking about, so.
Okay. Okay.
We're still on it, nine point eight, right?
Are we on nine point eight?
On a five to zero, what? We voted already, right?
Yeah, I interjected before the next episode. She has another item.
Oh, for nine point seven?
No.
No, okay, so we have voted on nine point seven, and now we need the results. So on a five to zero vote with student trustee abstaining, the motion on contracts has passed. Okay, nine point eight, trustee Bartlett.
Thank you, Madam President. So on number three, there's a Rancho San Diego Community College District item, and there's a reduction, or change order or amendment for lessening the amount by $67,000. Was this a programmer project that was canceled? Is that why there's a reduction?
Trustee Bartlett, the only information that I have is that they reduced the amount of the award as the fiscal agent through our regional organization for a specific project that we had, which simulation refers to simulation lab. So it is a way in which we train students for nursing and other healthcare professions with computerized simulator mannequins.
So what's happened is Rancho is the fiscal agent for regional workforce funds. So I chair the Orange County Regional Consortium, but Rancho is the fiscal agent. So what he's describing is that this particular project was funded, but there was a reduction.
Okay, so just a reduction, but project wasn't canceled, just a reduction in the allocation.
Yes. I'm told yes, that we still have some funding, but not all of it.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions on this item, so I will move the item.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Dack on the contracts. No. I'm sorry, change orders and amendments. Please vote. On a five to zero vote with student trustee abstaining, the motion on change orders and amendments has passed. We're now to section 10, 10.1, Irvine Valley College Campus Wide Heater Replacement Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Dack.
President.
Is there any discussion? Let's start with trustee Bartlett.
Okay, thank you. So on this particular item, there were four, four bidders or final bidders. And the low responsible bid was two hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred, which is seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, under the lowest of the four bids. The other bids were in the three hundred thousand dollar range, and I'm just, it's a small contract, but to have almost an eighty thousand dollar delta concerns me when they come in with a low bid and then sometimes change orders. Do we have an engineer's estimate or a public works estimate so we can kind of gauge if this is a reasonable amount? Because there's such a discrepancy between three of the bids that are similar and then this low bid.
It might be useful also just to talk about the process as well, because you get other information from the process.
Well, I'll try to answer your question, trustee Bartlett, but I believe it did come within budget. We did have a full set of designs for this project, so I believe it did come within budget, perhaps even lower, a little lower. But that being said, the smaller projects tend to be very hard to bid for contractors. There's very little give for them, but that lower amount that you see, I believe, did come within budget. But process itself, this is a low bid environment, but I also want to give Priya an opportunity, if she has anything else she can add.
What was the original estimate for the project, then?
I believe it was around two fifty-five or so, but I can confirm that.
Okay, trustee Jamal.
Oh. They'll let her go first.
Okay, go ahead, Ben. Oh, sorry, didn't see her.
The estimate is around two hundred and fifty thousand. I don't have it right now, but I can confirm that. It is a low bid, and the bid we received was lowest responsive responsible bidder. And since the bid came in, in the low bid environment, public contracting code requires us to award it to the lowest responsive. We did all our due diligence. The contractor was a viable contract, and the bid amount was matching up with the engineering estimate, so there was no reason for us to believe that.
Okay.
If I can just add also, I did forget to mention, for all of our bids that come in, we do go through a vetting process with all of our contractors before we issue any contracts. And so, all of our PMs and CMs, just they go through the project with the winning bidder and make sure, hey, did you cover this? Did you cover this? So we make sure all grounds are covered.
Okay, and just having that basis for reference of the two hundred and fifty thousand is important for me, because that gives me a gauge of what you were expecting, what came in, and why these top three were maybe so much higher. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
Can you stay up for it? A couple of things. Do you have any, do we have any experience working with this particular contractor?
I would have to verify that. I don't have that information right this moment.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with this contractor.
Okay. But it was a rigorous process, and I think we need to be mindful of it. But I, at this point, I commend you for saving the taxpayers' money on this project, and hopefully it will pan out. I count pennies here, and so, to the extent that we can save taxpayer money and hire a contractor to do the bid at eighty or a thousand dollars below, I commend that. Now, it doesn't mean we shouldn't monitor this process and ensure that there aren't, that the contractor is able to deliver on the services. Thank you.
All right, I'll move this item.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Dack. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Then it's time to vote, right? Is that where we are? On a five to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion on the Irvine Valley College Heater Replacement has passed. Okay. Number ten point two, South Orange County Repave Campus Drive East and Medical Center Drive Entrance Project at Saddleback College. Trustee Jamal.
I'll second, but I have a question.
Uh huh.
All right.
Let me, it's been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Jamal.
So I had some, funny, I talk about her when she's not here, but I had communications over the weekend with the chancellor and vice chancellor Gable on this. I am concerned that we only had one bid, and I did express that. And so, I know we have some familiarity with this contractor, but I think for any contract, and even this kind of contract, you know, we do live in Southern California, there are a number of pavers that are, that can do this type of work. I know they're typically probably busy all year round in California. So I just, I really hope in the future, because I kind of cringe when I only see one contractor, it looks like a sole source bid. So I was given, Anne Marie, over the weekend, and the chancellor told me they have familiarity with this contractor. But I think in the future, I love business services, I love the work that you're all doing, but I think we have to figure out a way to at least get a second bidder for these kinds of contracts.
Yeah, and just to be clear, too, there were three firms that showed up for the job walk as we had shared, and then two kind of fell through, and the.
These are small number for the walk through.
True, and the job was estimated at one point five, and it came in about that. Anyways, we hear you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, trustee Bartlett.
I had the same concern about the one bid, but when you did the walkthrough, the other two bidders couldn't meet our checklist of criteria, and that's why their bids couldn't be put into the process. There were two check items, and I think they couldn't meet those two. I forgot what the two items were, but the other two bidders could not meet our checklist items.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. On a five to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the vote ten point two to repave Campus Drive East and Medical Center has passed. Okay, section number eleven. Just a moment. All right, eleven point one, military leave request of a classified management team member.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. On a five to zero vote with trustee, student trustee voting advisory yes, the motion to grant military leave to the classified manager has passed, thanking him for his service. Eleven point two, destruction of class three disposable records.
Move the item.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Dack to pass a motion on the destruction of class three disposable records. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. On a five to zero vote with the student advisory vote abstaining, the vote on destruction of class three disposable records has passed. Okay, eleven point three. Academic Employees and Management Personnel Actions Ratifications, eleven point three.
Move the item.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Dack. Academic Employees and Management Personnel Actions. Is there any discussion?
I just, I, the heads of our, I usually mention the.
I usually mention that the, our wonderful employees that have been longtime employees and are retiring about them, but the heads of our constituent groups at the colleges highlighted our retiring professors, so I won't repeat the kind words that they said about these excellent professors. But I have to mention that longtime professor and old friend, Professor Bill Billingsley, asked me to share his thoughts with all the trustees about his many, many years with the district, which I did. I sent the information to staff, and she sent it to the board members, because we're not really allowed to send it to all the board members, that would be against the Brown Act. So I just have to mention that Professor Billingsley speaks about his employment and his appreciation of his years teaching and service to the academic senate. He highlighted his teaching in the honors program, the lifelong friends he made there, and he mentioned, we won't hear the end of him, he hopes, and he said, and we thank him and all the other retirees for the years of excellent service that they did to our students. So thank you so much for their years of service. Thank you.
Yes?
Yes.
And I know her name's not necessarily on this, but I think it is, it's somewhat related. When I learned that Jenny Langroll would be retiring, she actually was my neighbor growing up in San Clemente. So when I first ran for the board in twenty twenty, she was like, oh, I know that guy. So she was very helpful and very encouraging when I first ran for this board, when I definitely didn't have a shot. So I just wanted to say something, just to recognize Jenny and all the work that she's done at Saddleback.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. On a five to zero vote with the student advisory vote of abstention, the vote, the motion on academic employees and management personnel has passed. Number eleven point four, classified personnel actions and ratifications.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Dack, classified personnel actions and ratifications. Discussion? Okay, here's seeing none. Let's vote, please. On a five to zero vote with student trustee as an abstention, the vote on classified personnel actions has passed. Okay, we're now to thirteen information items. We have monthly financial status report, quarterly financial status report, retiree trust fund, pension stabilization trust fund, quarterly investment report, basic aid report, and Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers as information items. Just a second. Okay. Right. Okay, now we have reports from administration. Let's start with our chancellor.
All right, well, tis the season that we all know, and obviously it's commencement week, it's lovely and beautiful. And so obviously, we're celebrating our students, so congratulations to all of our students. But I think it's also just a reminder, and I know it's a reminder for me, of our purpose, right? We go through lots of trials and tribulations and joys and, you know, all kinds of things during the year. So this is also a celebration for us, the employees, our staff, and our faculty, and our administrators, and our board of trustees. So thank you all for supporting our students as well. Speaking of our students, tonight, before the open session, our board had a special session from Ginsler about Inspire twenty thirty-five. We've been working on our new long-range comprehensive plan for quite a while now. And so the board received an update on where we are with our new vision, mission, and values, and our strategic priorities and goals, and kind of next steps in that process. Next month, they'll have the ability to approve Inspire twenty thirty-five at the dais and also down here at the table. You got our new pen, and this basically starts, the saying here, "Students are at the heart of our mission," is the very first line in our new mission statement. And obviously, again, it's a reminder that we prioritize our students, their needs, their aspirations, with the hopes that they will make it to the finish line and achieve their goal. So this is for you. It's a heart-shaped pen. Well, you just love it, I do. So students at the heart of our mission. So yay to our students and love. All right, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Business services. Do we have a report?
Anne Marie left me a forty-page documentary read off here.
Okay.
No, just kidding, no report, thank you.
Her report that she put in the agenda was somewhat concerning.
I know.
Okay, how about the president of Irvine Valley College, Dr. Hernandez?
Thank you, trustee Inman. As has already been shared, we have spent the last few weeks with many celebrations that uplift the wonderful accomplishments of our students, and we know that it culminates with our commencement ceremonies. One that I would consider a prequel perhaps to our commencement was, last week, we held our early college breakfast. We had thirty-six students this year completing the Beckman High School Early College Program. It is the largest cohort since the first graduating class in twenty-eleven. What's incredible is that we've now had over three hundred and twenty students complete this program. The students earned their IGETSI, which is the general education for UC or CSU certificate and/or an associate degree, while also completing their high school requirements. And this does require a dual set of balancing act and responsibilities. These students apply in the eighth grade, and they take a series of college credit classes from ninth to twelfth grade. And again, just want to commend and congratulate the thirty-six students, many of whom will be participating in our fortieth commencement exercise. We will be conferring one thousand, two hundred and fifty certificates and over three thousand associate degrees. And so, just as a preview, amazed to break this record again, especially when it happens for a third consecutive year. But this year, we have ten-year-old Zora Elling becoming IVC's youngest graduate, earning an associate degree for transfer in mathematics, continuing the legacy that her sister Athena broke last year, and then previous year, her brother Tyco broke in twenty twenty-three. So I didn't make it up, this is actually a very talented family, and we'll be celebrating Zora along with the class of twenty twenty-five.
Well, we want to know how many children they have. We do this next year. Thank you very much. I know. One more, that's what I meant, yeah. How many more?
This is one way for our commencements to stand out, and I think, last year, I think the, even the, I think the Orange County Register covered the story, and that's a really great story.
That's great. A shy one. President Stern, Saddleback.
Thank you, President Inman. I want to thank constituent leaders for acknowledging their colleagues who are retiring this year. We are actually losing a very significant and robust brain trust this year, and we will miss a lot of those folks. I also want to congratulate Christian Suazo for his year of leadership of ASG, and to let him know that he is the fifth of six of the last ASG presidents to either go to UCLA or UC Berkeley, so we're continuing that tradition. I also want to congratulate outgoing Classified Senate President Erlin Ballow on a year of great accomplishments, including robust internal PD on our campus, as well as our first ever just completed new employee onboarding to help new employees acclimate and learn about Saddleback's special sauce culture. This Thursday, we will have more students ascend the dais at Saddleback College than ever in our fifty-seven-year history. We will award, right now, on target to fifty-six hundred and eighty-one certificates and associate degrees. Usually that picks up from summer completions, and will probably end up over six thousand more than ever in our history. But here's what I'd like you to understand about that. The average Saddleback student is part-time and takes about four years to complete an associate degree. So if you think about these students graduating at commencement this year, they actually started in the heart of the pandemic, in the depths of the pandemic, when our enrollment was actually down fifteen, twenty percent. So what we're looking at are some of the smallest classes in the last decade, producing the greatest number of graduates. And what that says is that the colleges are doing something right, that more students than ever are being made successful and making their way to the dais. Those equity gaps are being closed, more students are gaining access to the colleges and to our resources, and for that, we are very proud, and it'll be a very special celebration this Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Chancellor of Education and Technology, Dr. Chris. No report. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, Kim Wittes. No report. No report. Okay, thank you so much. All right. Does anyone have any other things they need to bring up? Or happy commencement, everybody, and the meeting is adjourned.